Good evening, Board. I just wanted to stop by and say a big thank you for everyone's help on last weekend's Coon Creek Fest. As you can tell, it was a huge success. Weather was perfect. We really didn't have any major problems with anything to Mr. Cox. As everybody's seen, I've got multiple emails, phone calls, Facebook is loaded with comments on how well it took off next to the effort of the village and my committee, and I commend everybody here for doing that. We appreciate everybody's help. Fireworks were fantastic. Again, we got lucky with the weather. If it had been Monday or Sunday instead of Monday, we would have a complete rain out. So again, we appreciate the financial support the village has made the festival what it is, and we'd like you to keep that in mind come next March when you have your budget meeting. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good job, Earl. Good. Thank you.
All right. Before you, you have the meeting minutes from August 3, 2023. Please review them at this time. While you review them, I'd like to introduce Ms. Erin Hirtat. She is taking the place of Jimmy Bastelli tonight in her prior commitment. Couldn't be here, so now this is here in his place. Will probably like you more.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any concerns about the minutes from August 3, 2023? Hearing no concerns, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from August 3, 2023 as presented.
Go ahead.
Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy Kirk? Well, actually, we're not doing it. Probably over remote. Can you do a little call? Mr. Ko?
Hi.
Mr. Ma?
Hi.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Ms. Ma?
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Florer?
Aye.
And Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Good evening, Mr. Addis.
Good evening, Mr. Ma. Thank you. First up tonight, we have a new business presentation by Self-Storage Developers LLC, Mr. Peter Patzorillov. We'll introduce his team to make a brief presentation. This is a company that we're looking to locate here. You don't worry about it.
Well, thank you very much for giving up your time and here for a short presentation. I got a question. Elkhart, Indiana. There's a Hall of Fame in Elkhart, Indiana. Does anyone know what Hall of Fame is in the world?
Not Hall of Fame Museum.
I have been there.
Yeah, that's a beautiful place to know.
It's not. It's actually a pretty cool place. But I'm into that stuff. I know, I know. Sorry.
You're not silently.
Anyway, Peter Patzorillov, Self-Storage Developers. I'm a partner, along with Bill Canadas in Dan Salsberg, and a mother partner of ours, Alcololias. He couldn't be here. The reason I'm here. About two weeks ago, we had a informal meeting with Jay, Mike, and Josh regarding a piece of property near the corner of I-90 and Route 20. Actually, it's Higgins and Route 20. Thirty-eight acres. And what we would like to do with these thirty-eight acres is develop this property. What is our plan? Our plan is to put a premier RV and self, both self-storage on this property, along with a residential component to it. Next slide, please. This is a site. It's a thirty-eight acre site. You'll see that there's residential next to it on the west, and to the north is more commercial. Here's the next slide. There's And that's another picture from farther out. You can see the residential in the... As far as the RV storage facility itself, this will be similar to what this looks like. It's canopies protecting the RVs. And we need to keep going on those slides. These are just examples of what it will look like. The next slide, one more. You'll see amenities for this RV storage. There's air, there's a keyless entry, there's water to rinse off the RVs, there's a dump station, there's also gas, propane gas for the RVs, ice, and even a conference facility for the renters. Next slide.
He hit the button.
Oh, sorry. As far as the RV and bolt storage, why are we doing this? You can see from nineteen, from 2012 to 2022, ten years, how much the RVs have sold. In 2012, it might have been into tons of millions. 2022, it was $275, $85 million worth of RVs sold. So this is going up. And because of this, there's a lack of facilities for RV storage. People are parking in front of their houses. They're doing things that maybe they shouldn't as far as RVs are concerned because they can't find space. So that's why we're doing this. Next slide. We're partnering up with a company that's thirty-eight years old, and they've been doing RV storage for that amount of time, both building them and owning them. So we have a partner who has expertise in this field. Self-Storage Developers, we do self-storage along with RV storage, and we're looking for sites throughout the U.S.
Next.
And as far as self-storage is concerned, what is our plan?
I'm watching him over here flipping it, and then it's just...
Okay. Anyway, what's our plan? First of all, we'd like to be addicts to Hampshire. That would be first on our list, if provided you agree to that. The other part of the plan would be divided into three phases. First phase, first phase is the RV and bolt storage. It's going to consist of nine point three-nine acres. This is going to be in the northeast corner of the property, four hundred and thirty-six spaces for RV. The second phase, this is a twenty-acre site next to the first stage. It's on the western half of the property. This will be a single or town-owned residential development, and we'll probably team up with a residential developer to get this done. So Phase One and Phase Two might be done at the same time, maybe, maybe not. Phase Three, Phase Three will be a continuation of the RV. Once Phase One is three-quarters full, we would start on the Phase Three to do another, I believe, four hundred and sixty spaces, nine point seven-five acre. How are we going to run this, run the operations? Number one, I think, is security. We're going to put a aesthetically pleasing fourteen-foot sense fence around the property to protect vehicles and to buffer the neighbors from this facility. Cameras will be on 24/7. Every inch of this property will be on camera. We'll have state-of-the-art LED lighting for safety and security, but we don't want to disturb the neighbors with the lighting. So what's going to happen is the light is going to be underneath these fourteen-foot canopies facing down. The blue light will be going up. There will be no light poles to bother the neighbors and them. So that is part of the lighting. What's going to happen with the lighting at night? Half the lighting will be on. If by some reason somebody goes in there to drop off their vehicle or clean or do whatever, and they're there before 9:00 p.m., lights will go on with motion detectors where that person is. So all those lights will be on at that point. When he leaves, they'd be off, and half the lights will be on. Hours of operations. Tenants would have access between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. If nobody has access with a security code, that they will have to get to open the gate, get their vehicle in and out, and a manager will be on-site at the facility from 10:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. every day. As far as traffic is concerned, really, what happens with the RVs is people use the RVs for two, three, eight weeks or whatever. They come in, pick up the RV, drive off, they're not there for four, five, eight weeks, they come back, drop it off, and they're gone. So what's going to happen is you're not going to have a lot of traffic. People, and once they leave the RV there, they're there for the next seven, eight, nine months. So there's not a lot of people going in and out, and the traffic's not going to be there. So it's not going to bother the neighbors, and as far as the roads are concerned, it's not going to be a problem with the roads. The next slide, this is Phase One, what the RV is, the RV storage is going to look like, where the four hundred and thirty-six spaces are. It's just, it's a, yeah, a preliminary plan that we have, and basically, I think they forgot on this plan, the office spot, but we're going to have to put that down. So this is off the limit. I mean, it's something we thought of, and it's in motion, but it's basically what we're thinking. Again, I want to thank you all for listening to our presentation, and we really look forward to meeting with the people we've met, you know, the people in the school that are talking up and down. We're saying hello, and we love the community. So if you have any questions, please leave them up.
Does anyone have any questions about the meeting?
Can you give us an example of what an aesthetically pleasing fourteen-foot fence might be? Because I'm trying to imagine, like, what would that look like?
It's not going to be like a chain link fence. It's just sitting there. It'll be something out of a chain link that'll... I don't have any pictures right now, but we'll make sure that it is, it fits in with the...
I think decorative fence, decorative metal. Steel fence, that's what we're thinking. This is a high-end executive RV car, RV storage. This isn't like, you know, just a field.
You know, our customer base is going to be RVs, you know, from $50,000, costing $50,000 up to, you know, $550,000. So security's big on that, and we'll expect the premier types of facility.
Mr. Ray is pulling up pictures from the presentation that might perhaps be like a further left.
And thank you for the presentation here. I know that residents close to that area think it's our little kind of development going, and knowing that in your presentation, you're taking a lot of time and care to say, we're going to do what we can not to, you know, the residents, there's some homes that you're thinking about going in there, downlighting. It's really encouraging to see that.
And we want to work with the community on this. We don't want to just come out and say, this is what we can do. We want to, you know, work hand-in-hand with everybody here.
One question I do have, because the amenities, I know that a lot of, in this community too, a lot of people have RVs, so I can see it being used for those that live in the community. I see the, and you talked about the keyless entry, the air, the water, the propane on the space. Is there a dump station there as well as a dump station? Would they do that at the trucks?
Usually what happens with RVs, there are people go to their destination, they leave the destination, and they empty the RVs there. Why? Because they don't want to drive with all that stuff in their car. So this will be used, this is only another amenity. It's hardly used at all.
But there will be a dump, there should be, yeah.
It would be available.
It'll be available.
In your experience, it's not really used.
Right, right. And well, it's have a rinse station there, but it's not really for soap, you know, like, soap thing. It's just rinsing up, but they can power wash.
Yes, water.
Yeah. So we don't want any of the chemicals or anything like that, harsh chemicals on the property. And this makes the neighborhood, you know, safer, right? When you have RVs, opposed to parking on the driveway, because it's safer, you know, for security reasons, for everyone, community.
Are there going to be restrictions in place to restrict people from, like, wrenching on these things in the, in the storage area, changing new oil in the RVs and stuff that has to be done?
There'll be restrictions.
It's amazing to meet the amount of people that have, you know, real expensive RVs. We got to change their own oil and leave it all over the driveway.
There'll be restrictions, but we don't want that on our property. Any questions? Thank you very much for allowing us to do the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ma, with that, we would ask for consideration for a motion to award a facade improvement grant in the amount of $25,820.61. Can I interrupt you?
Excuse me, gentlemen.
Can I, can I interrupt you really briefly? If you guys don't want to stick around for the end of it, there's going to be no disrespect. We have the same...
Thank you.
So, you know, I feel like you didn't watch the rest of this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll catch you on YouTube tonight.
Yeah. Sorry about that, Mr. Trump. And the amount of $20,150 to Mark Sikowski at State Farm for improvements to 185 South State Street. This is fifty percent of the total project cost of $40,300. With that, I'd like to refer to Mr. Kelly. He attended the BDC meeting last week.
Yeah. So this is one of the projects that we considered at the previous BDC meeting. BDC meeting. You'll see that in tonight's agenda, there were multiple projects to be discussed. So this is the State Farm building right across the way there. So when they look at the project, there's a couple of things they are really focused on doing. One of the things they want to do is remove the vinyl siding, because they really like the way that the brick on both sides of them has turned out, both from Ardenberry as well as from the barbershop and some of the other areas. So they'd like to try to match their surroundings as much as possible with stone on the bottom and the brick above. They also want to paint the exterior concrete, paint the wood trim, and then replace all the exterior windows and frames. And then I know Mr. Swalwell is also working with them on signage and what that could look like down there as well. The original application came in at seventy-five with an ask for seventy-five percent of the total. The BDC felt that the building itself has been a good-looking building for a while, but it has, it's starting to show its age, and it would be nice to have it match as much as possible to the rest of the building. So the BDC recommended, on a unanimous vote, a fifty percent recommendation to the building for conservation.
What have we done with all, all of the other ones in the past? All of the other grants, facade grants, what have we given as an average percentage-wise to those?
It's varied. We've done seventy-five percents. There's others in here that are seventy-five percents. We've done some fifty percents, but usually it's no less than fifty percent. And sometimes the BDC has recommended one percentage, and the Village Board has done a different. So it's ultimately, as we know, to the Village Board. And as I've said in the past, these votes I abstained from, but I will let you know where my vote was in the BDC, and I was part of the unanimous vote to approve this at fifty percent.
Mr. Paul Strini?
My end.
I didn't want to interrupt your talking.
Oh, no, no worries. Does anyone have any questions about this project?
Was there any discussion in relation to not keeping, or not trying to make every building look similar? Like, I guess what I'm getting at here is, I think it's kind of cool that some of the buildings just fit even though they look different, like for example, State Farm, it's a nice looking building, but it's not a brick. So was there any discussion to keeping things related?
Yeah, so there was, there actually was more discussion of trying to find a little bit of commonality and uniformity than not having everything look so different. However, the stone and the brick would be different than their other buildings right next to it. So it's not like it would be a cookie cutter same material.
Okay.
In fact, it was more of a blend of white and red brick. So there would be, it would look different to your point, but the approach of stone and brick would be the same.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So it wouldn't look like one same building the whole way down. And it will, just as a note, there is a tenant going in there. It will be, it will remain a State Farm office, and...
His name is Tyler. I met him at the restaurant today.
And so...
Nice little guy.
So this is being submitted by the building owner, but he already has the tenant, which is the State Farm agent.
Excellent.
Mr. Kelly, was there any discussion about the fact that they are also asking to paint the rear of the building? I know we had previously discussed...
Because there's also windows being done on the rear.
Okay.
And because the rear is visible by multiple points, it was felt that's a part of the design.
I know we had...
And in fact, there are other applications that didn't reference some windows that were on the rear of a building, and we actually sent that back for reconsideration.
I know there have been other projects submitted where we had discussed at great length, you know, if you're facing or not. I just wanted to...
Yeah.
We have one question just about the sign. And I guess there was a couple of things that people brought up in the past. We really don't, you know, what kind of a sign is it? Is it something that's going to be huger than the building? Is it going to be blinking?
Yeah, we have a current sign grievance that was discussed in the BDC, and I can share that discussion during the report, the BDC report. What I can say is that the sign that they currently have to go out there is a State Farm branded sign. So it's not like just some big neon flashing thing. It's a State Farm branded sign, but I think Mr. Swalwell is trying to work with the owner and the tenant to find an aesthetically pleasing way to have a State Farm branded sign. They looked at some places of how like the State Farm office in Barrington looks, where it's more of an on-English State Farm on it, or, you know, is there a way to, so that it isn't this very large sign. I haven't seen it myself, but I know that's one of the discussions. That's why sign is on here, is to consider working on that. Is that a good representation?
Yes. I believe the BDC is going to recommend some amendments to our sign orders for down this. After beautification. Does anyone have any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to award a facade improvement grant in the amount of $20,150 on the State Farm buildings, and on 185 South State. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy Kirk, can you hold a roll, please? Mr. Ma?
Aye.
Ms. Paul Strini?
Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
Ms. Florer?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Good to stand.
Mr. Ko?
Aye.
Push it past. All right. You want to hand this back to Mr. Hedges, or do you want to just... We... I'll read it for you. Yes. All right, thank you. We'd ask your consideration of a motion to award a facade grant improvement grant, a facade improvement grant in the amount of $25,820.61 to LG Brothers, Inc. for improvements to 129 State Street. This is seventy-five percent of the total project cost, $34,427.48. Mr. Kelly?
So this is what will become Malle's Gaming Cafe on the corner of State and Washington. And I will share what Mr. Swalwell shared in the meeting, in that when beautification met, they liked the project, but they had additional suggestions, like having matching windows on both sides of the door, and considerations of additional enhancements and running the electrical. And he said, not only were the owners of this project so very receptive, within a day or two, they had all of the quotes for these new types of additions into the project, because they didn't know it was either covered, or they really felt, yeah, that would help this look and feel a lot better, as well as the adjacent space, not just the gaming cafe. But if you remember, that's been subdivided to two businesses, so this would cover both of those. And so this includes painting of the brick, new windows and window frames, exterior doors, some architectural repairs, tuck pointing and brick repair. There's also putting in, when we talk about windows, putting in another... If you see the windows right now, there, there's one large window to the left or north of the door. There would be that same type of window installed to the opposite side of the door to get more light. It's running some of the electrical. What they found was, when it was Ace Hardware, the power was run, it wasn't built into the building. So the power that was run to the front for the lights to go over the door, they will actually be having those done correctly. I shouldn't say correctly. They'll have it put into the building as construction and run to the power source. So when they rent the next building next to it, they can have lights above the door and the security as well. And yeah, Mr. Swalwell had said that they have just been phenomenal applicants and willing and excited to make changes as suggested by the beautification committee. The color of the bricks that would be on the Washington side would actually be, they had thought gray, and the beautification committee, Mr. Swalwell, suggested white, and they said, yeah, that's great. So those would be white bricks on that side. And so it's basically to redo a lot. And because of the improvement that it would make tonight, if you remember, the only facade grant that that build, that part of the building had ever gotten was just to bring it to code, because we had insulation coming out the front. So this would be a lot, make a big impact, which is why the BDC felt it, seventy-five percent. Again, a unanimous vote. My vote, I suppose, was yes.
At the front of that building, used to be big plate glass windows, forty-three dollar appliances out of that building. And then early 2000s, they came and they put all the wood up that you see and enclosed it and all that kind of stuff. So I think that's opening it back up, but I don't want to say plate glass windows, but big opening windows, kind of make it look like it used to.
I have a question for our Village Manager. Do they give any kind of tentative date of when they plan to open this place?
I expect to have their gaming license in September and open shortly if they're up in October.
Because they bought this, like, well over a year ago, right?
No, I think in January.
That was discussed as well. There were a lot of unexpected construction costs and projects that came up to bring the building to code, such as restrooms and having to cut through concrete, because that side of the building has no basement. So it's on a slab, so they have to cut your slab, you're on pipes. There was just a lot of unexpected construction projects that had to take it a little bit.
I'd like to just, again, mention the sign, and I know we're in the process of switching the units, but it wasn't clear as to what it was. I guess it's page thirty-five in our packet. It is a round ACM sign with digitally printed vinyl graphics. So it didn't sound like it was lighted. It's...
It's a projected sign, very much like the beautification committee's been encouraging.
Yeah, and then October had the light, so down light, the sign was not...
Okay.
Like the one in front of Copper Barrel, even on our building, we have the...
Yeah.
That's what the BDC and beautification committee have been encouraging.
That's just what they understand, is that they say, what about a sign, having this type of sign?
Has the beautification committee thought anything about offering a percent here or there, extra percentage points for utilizing local businesses that, that do this? I noticed a lot of their, a lot of their stuff is from Crystal Lake, not Hampshire, like the sign from Crystal Lake.
I think the majority of their bids are Incredible Builders.
Right.
But to your direct question, I don't know. I can, I can ask Mr. Swalwell if that's something the beautification committee can take into consideration, but that, that was not discussed. Yeah, the glass in here is Crystal Lake, and then fast signs is Crystal Lake, and then the rest is Incredible Builders. Yeah. So if you see on page thirty-six of the packet, you'll see that very large window. The idea is on the right side of that door to have that same large window, as well as a window on the corner facing Washington, just to add a lot of natural light.
To that other tenant, then, do they have a tenant for that one yet?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Are they going to try to match it? Because it's...
It's going to be identical.
It is.
The idea is to have a mirror.
Did this establishment, the Seal, the facade grant, have been doing improvements? They have done so far, or is this their first application?
No, this is the first application for the, for the owner of the building now. This building is the one that I had mentioned. The only other facade grant was for siding to hide insulation.
Right. I think it was like $14,000 or two.
Right.
So this is the owner's first...
Correct.
So all that work that has been done has been out of the...
Out of the owner's pocket, one hundred percent. And the stuff that Mr. Swalwell had had conversations with her about, she had liked to do, but had thought she'd have to pay out of her pocket, and she found out that it was covered under the facade grant. And there were additional she hadn't thought of. She thought that was great. She just had to, that's what I was talking about, the increased cost of having to cut through the slab and stuff. It ended up, the remodel has cost significantly more than what she had estimated, but all of that has been out of her pocket, or out of that company's stock.
Any other discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve a facade improvement grant in the amount of $25,820.61 to LG Brothers for improvements to 129. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy clerk?
Ms. Pallastri? Aye.
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
This voter?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Good to stand.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Pass five zero.
Thank you. That Mr. Mayor would ask your consideration of a motion to award a facade grant in the amount of $2,353.80 to 124 South State Street LLC. This is Hampshire Social for improvements to 124 South State Street. That would be 75% of the total project cost, $3,138.48. Mr. Kelly?
And the total, I think, is 22, 300, the 75%.
I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. It's 23, 2353.
2353 is what it's, okay. So this is for Hampshire Social. This would be their second facade grant they'd be receiving. What they'd like to do, if anybody's been in there in the morning when the sun is beating in, those windows get pretty, it gets pretty bright and unreal getting pretty hot in there. So what they'd like to do, this is to tint, to UV protection tint on those windows, so that the patrons that are going in there in the morning are protected. BDC had a conversation about it. We admitted that this is the second one that they've done because of the small amount and the minimal impact it has to the overall budget for the BDC and the resulting benefit it gives that business and the patrons of that business. It was felt that 75% was okay in this case for the 2030.
Anyone have any questions?
Not about this particular project, just the three in total. My math brings this up to $48,000. Does this mean we have about 51, 52 left for this fiscal year for the facade program?
I have it to 51, 75 and change.
That's what I get?
Yep.
Okay.
Other projects under consideration too? Application becomes.
Are we anticipating we'll be able to fund all of the projects that are coming soon?
New, let's see what they look like. New projects, depending on what they come in at, that we discussed here, I don't know if there are others in addition to that, discussed here in the BDC, I mean. There is only one other project I'm aware of that we've asked them to kind of take another look at. There may be one or two over that.
There are two others that have acquired but have not submitted application to.
And that project wouldn't eat air out of that.
Any other questions, comments, concerns about the program or this improvement grant?
No, just again, we've got a window to any place. Here we got one out by the restaurant at 20. Here we're, I mean, they have the right to go wherever they want. I get that. Here's a window to their Antioch.
It's definitely worth something to bring up to the beautification, so I'll make sure that it's discussed. Because you're right, you know, we could find a way to incentivize it. You'd have to look at the program, but that would be something that I can make sure makes its way to the beautification.
I agree. And honestly, to kind of follow what Trustee Coth was saying, just Coth was saying, sorry, is maybe that incentive is, you know, 50%, but bumps it to 75 if they utilize local businesses. Just as something to figure out. So they have the opportunity and helps everybody in town as well. I think that would be a good use.
I'll entertain a motion to approve a facade improvement grant in the amount of $2,353.83 to 124 South State LLC for improvements to 124 South State. Questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Deputy clerk?
Mr. Robinson?
Aye.
This voter?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Good to stand.
Mr. Coth?
Aye.
Mr. Mott?
Aye.
Ms. Pallastri?
Aye.
Push it past five zero. Thank you. And now we would ask you to have a discussion among yourselves. Talk amongst yourselves, please. We like reading. Regarding amendments to the residential chicken regulations, we have it for you in your packet. And if you have a supplement from Josh, you also have a preliminary draft ordinance prepared by Aaron, who's sitting next to me, attorney Aaron. So you're welcome to ask them questions throughout. This is a discussion amongst yourselves, Mr. Mayor.
So we discussed the chicken program once upon a time, feels like months ago now, and we noted that there wasn't a whole lot of feedback. The invention of technology and streaming video, it was brought to my attention that there was quite a bit of feedback that didn't get taken into account. And so.
How did that happen?
Say again.
How did that happen?
What do you mean, how did that happen?
How did we say there was no feedback and all of a sudden now there's a bunch of feedback?
Well, it seems that, it seems that we sent emails that either one got blocked or weren't responded to or got buried in email boxes and all that kind of stuff. And it was talked about that we were looking at changing the program or leaving the program as is. And then everybody said, well, wait, we didn't get a chance to forget. So then we went back and looked at our stuff and said that we sent emails to, emails either we had on file and people had changed email addresses and there's a million reasons as to why we didn't get the responses we wanted. But we took the, I took the opportunity to meet with this group right here in the village hall and talk about their feedback and talk about some of the things that their pain points. And the biggest thing I can stress in that conversation is, you know, I'm not really interested in changing the program just on the fact that you don't like something. I like, you know, as we do at this board, everything we do is kind of based on data and facts and that kind of stuff. And so, you know, the changes that are being presented this evening in the agenda supplement, and we can go through them line by line. Again, this is just for discussion before we go and we draft and change everything. This is what I felt were reasonable asks, if you will, from that, from the group and because there was some pretty good discussion. I think that we met two and a half hours or so longer here, one by one and stuff like that. So I guess we can go through, I guess we'll go through the supplement. I guess, Josh, did you write the supplement?
I did.
Okay, so you did a really good job summarizing, I appreciate that. We've had no code enforcement issues period with chickens at all. Now, we've got some people like myself that have voiced displeasure about having chickens in the backyard, but overall, we've had no complaints as far as code enforcement stuff at all. So everybody that has a license now currently has done a really good job. We have 10, well, not we have 10 licenses, but how many did we need?
How many do we actually have? Because we had had, last I heard, we had some people that had gotten licenses and never built the coop.
So in the fall, there were six that had actually procured permits to build their coops. I don't know if they ever got to the chickens themselves. And then there was a couple license changes. So I think we're still at six or seven that actually have permits to build the coops.
Okay.
It's been a couple weeks.
Have we had any complaints from the public to any, of any of the residents with adjoining properties concerning the chickens?
Yes.
We had a public comment.
Well, I think, yeah, oh, he's in attendance. Not, not signaling you out, but you did speak publicly about your displeasure with chickens.
When you say that there have been.
With the overall concept. Correct. Correct. Okay.
Can you say that there have been six or seven permits issued? Have those permits been inspected and those coops been built? How many actual coops do we have built?
I can tell you that I see is that the permit applications are in, I'd have to look and see at what stage they're all at, if they pass their final inspections or not. And I don't know which ones all actually have the chickens either.
So I can tell you that I, we met with seven here, eight. And so I know that six of them had coops. I know that. Built and that kind of stuff. So those are my, those are my real numbers and you can dig in and find out, right? Because we do require the permits and the inspections and all that kind of stuff, so you can have that too. But on that same note, on that same note, one of the things that we found through this is that we have allowable height of chicken runs and coops at six feet. And one of the pain points for a lot of, a lot of the people is, is that requires you to be really handy because apparently if you were to go to the store and buy a chicken coop that's pre-fabricated, already built, it's either six foot.
Oh, higher, how much higher?
So that's why we're proposing in this to go to seven versus six, because it's anywhere between six and, like six and, six foot three inches, six and a half, you know, six foot eight. You know, it depends on, depends on how you, your ground and the topology is and how you have to put your piers in the ground and that kind of stuff, because the height is to the ground. So if you have to counter for any type of geographical swales in your yard, that kind of stuff, that's why we went from six to seven. I felt that that was a fair ask because, you know, some people might have gotten a license or, or as a matter of fact, I know of one person that got the license and realized that they couldn't go out and buy one and they was like, and they were, they just weren't, they weren't going to go build, they just weren't going to go build one. They didn't, either one, I'm not saying the person didn't have the skill, I'm not saying that, but they didn't have the desire to build something. But I felt like point number three was a pretty reasonable ask.
What was the reason for asking to go from four to eight chickens? It's used for personal reasons?
The reason is there's a multiple, there's a couple of different reasons that were presented. One was the amount of eggs that are laid per day for, for chickens. And if you have a larger family, it doesn't, doesn't really do much help because they don't lay enough. And then when the weather starts to get cold, they lay less eggs. Okay, that was, that was, those were two of the ones. The other point was, is there are some people that are perfectly happy with, let's say, four, right? But then one chicken for another reason, one reason or another passes away. And I guess it's harder, and I don't, I'm not, we've had some, look into this, but I guess it's harder to integrate just one chicken versus two. And so, and then there's another issue that was introduced with, I guess, I'm trying to use racial analogy. Sometimes they don't sex the chickens correctly. You buy a chicken and then you'll have three chickens and then all of a sudden the one little chick gets old enough and you realize that you have a rooster and then you've got to get rid of this rooster because we don't allow roosters. And then you have to introduce another chicken, another chicken and then goes back to square one. So again, I am not, I'm not a chicken expert, but I've relied on a lot of.
You sound like one.
Or a guy that didn't even want this to happen or anything. So.
It seems like to me some of those needs, five or six needs that. You lose two. It doesn't. Why? Because if you got time in the morning on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, stop at my shop, Mike Green raises chickens.
Mike who?
Reeve. Reeve raises chickens. Wait a minute. He's tried to bring on one or two and it's been unsuccessful every single time. But he's got 50, so you're welcome to come over and he'll give you every bit of chicken stuff you want. So that doing two at a time doesn't. It's hard, but it's, it's possible. It's easier in a, in a, in a smaller group. Right. And if I lost one, six would allow me to have three. Right. Just trying to think like.
I understand.
You're saying I need more than one, we're saying double, or to ask us to.
And then there was, there was a great, a really good conversation about the fact that there was a majority of the people that were in this group of the seven that were there that they may not necessarily ever want eight, but should something happen where they need to be introduced, that would give them the flexibility to have more than four. And again, with the weather, with the weather and you get the colder months, they don't lay as much. And so, and then, you know, we've got, like the one couple, I'm sorry, I think they had five kids. And I realized that, you know, we all have choices in life and that kind of stuff, but when your, your hens don't lay as many eggs as to feed your whole family, then some of, you know, there's some of the kids are upset about not being able to eat chicken eggs and like, you know, like, I mean, I have a six and a half year old. I know how those situations work.
I do have a question on page 46 of our packet.
Sure.
Number three.
46.
Coop's got to be sized properly for the number of chickens. Provided no coop shall be larger than 50 square feet in area, no more, no more than 10 feet in height. I thought you said we're going to go to seven.
So the, the six to seven is the run, the outdoor area that the chickens are allowed to roam around in. The coop would be the enclosure and that's 10 foot. Those are built with, I'll just say better materials, you know, wood or whatever the case, they're solid.
And that's.
Trustee Coth's question. If we increased it to six or eight, doesn't the minimum square footage have to increase as well?
No, because if you're talking height, that doesn't affect square footage. Square footage is just for.
Right. Isn't there a minimum square, recommended square footage? We had this discussion when it first came out. There's a minimum recommended square footage for a chicken.
Yeah, it's in here somewhere.
It's in that same section.
50 feet or four square, four square feet per chicken. So four times eight is 32.
Okay, so still under the 50.
Yeah.
So we'll go back to the, I'm just going back to the agenda supplement so I can have all my points across so we can adjust them. The, the modifying, the provision prohibiting keeping chickens inside, chicks until fully feathered. Our code is pretty generic in the fact that it says inside, which technically means garage. And so in the wintertime, the program as it's written right now, we're not saying that we're going to allow you to put a leash on these things and let them live in your house. That's not what this is about. It's a matter, it's a matter of trying to give the chickens, the chicks a way to survive. And sometimes in the winter here, it gets really cold. So this would allow them to be able to be in somebody's garage. The fear was, is that somebody has them in their garage, they open the door, another neighbor's walked by, this dude's got chickens living in his garage, you know, that kind of stuff. So that, I think that that again was a reasonable, I think it was a reasonable ask because until they're fully feathered, they, as soon as that happens, they're out. They get a big, you know. The last point is probably going to be the most talk about point here. One of the biggest pain points that staff has had to undertake during this process has been the screening part of this. And we've actually talked about it with the board level, we've talked about it a bunch of times, actually, what is, because I think the definition is like reasonably screened or something of that nature. What was the word?
I guess that not visible by. Effectively screened.
Effectively.
Not visible by your name.
Effectively screening. And so then the conversation is, is what's effective? Is it wood? Is it metal? Is bushes? Is it, you know? And so one of the asks from the group was to rather than screen this, screen them, if we were to prohibit or analyze allowable materials for this to be made out of, to their point, some of these coops and runs look nicer than people's sheds in their backyard currently. And so, so, so that, the, the point of the conversation was, is rather than forcing somebody to put up screenings so their neighbor can't see, we enforce the type of materials that these can be built out of, you're essentially looking at a shed, you know? And so that, that was the, that was their ask. I tend to, you know, I, I don't know, I, I tend to agree with a certain aspect of it. I mean, some of these are, they build this, they want these. I mean, I went to Farmer Fleet, Tractor Supply, some of these don't, they look pretty good.
You're not talking anything concerning landscaping, preventing neighbors from having to view it?
Right. That's what the ask is. And so I said, I was fully transparent in the fact that we went round and round about the screening thing in the very beginning. And so, you know, again.
Isn't it, isn't it correct to say that our requirement was that people would have, some people would have to plant 10 foot high bushes and it's too expensive?
Like our providers and stuff, you know? So it was again, one of those more cost prohibitive things for somebody to undertake. And I said, and again, I, I just met with this group and I said that I would take this stuff, you know, that was rooted in fact, some of the pain points from the group, provide the feedback, as this is a pilot program and we did commit to making changes as long as there were reason, there was reason for feedback and that kind of stuff. So I guess that's, that's my thought process with it. That's why, that's how we got to where we have the proposed ordinance in front of you. It's not proposed, it's just a drafted ordinance in front of you for the sake of discussion. So now I turn the floor over to you guys.
So what kind of materials are they going to use to block from the neighbors?
They wouldn't have to if we took away the screening requirement.
I guess my, my concern with this isn't, it's one, a neighbor who's been there for a while now asks to stare in the back of, no matter how nice it looks, chickens out there running. It's the chicken run is where they're at. You can move that around, right?
In a couple of, in a couple of years, uh, this will fix itself. You know, we could, we could, yes, some say, say, you know, in two years, we're cutting it back.
Uh, 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 to your question about grandfathering and attorney, if you're not, can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we would be able to force people to get rid of, you know, half of their chickens. But once a chicken passed away, they would not be able to add an addition to the four.
Or six or whatever that number is.
Right.
I'm not that educated on chickens there.
Stop by to shop Monday.
The University of Minnesota says they can continue to live for five to 10 years.
I have a, I have a employee of mine that has 50.
Maybe that's why they only want 50.
Because there's too many.
So can I, can I just get a pulse? Cause here's, here's what has to come out of this, guys, because we need to give the staff a direct action item so that they can bring this back to us at the next meeting. I'd like to, because of the laying season and that kind of stuff and the weather getting cold, I'd like to get this wrapped up at the next meeting. Um, so how are we feeling about one? Yes or no? I mean, yes.
I'm a yes.
No.
It's simple.
Hey, I'm going back to one.
One's up.
Oh, hey, I'm fine with that.
Mr. Martin?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly?
Yeah.
Ms. Fauci, you're no?
No.
Okay. Um, the screening requirements, I, I heard resounding no from everyone on the board. Um, we can investigate, you know, they'll stay, um, increasing from six to seven?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And then, uh, staying in the garage.
Yes.
So now you guys have your.
Good to go.
Mr. Anderson, one thing out that this is a zoning code, so it takes a tax amendment through a public hearing process. So it does have to go before planning and zoning court, come back here.
What, what part of this is the zoning?
All four parts. Um, to your, to your point, the currently, the number of licenses can be set by a motion by the board at any time. If something like the number of pens, you want to make it that way as well, that's up to you. But currently it goes through a public hearing process of planning.
Can we just change that via ordinance?
No.
Thanks for coming up, which requires the same hearings. Same.
On that note too then, because it's not listed as one of the four things is the, uh, oh, we've already done that from a, who did the big thing?
Well, the board still needs to. That was, I didn't tell you.
Is there, are there, is there a waitlist to get chickens?
There's, I think, two people that inquired, uh, after work got out that there was five additional licenses. Last I knew, they contacted.
The problem was that. The issue is, is if we were to increase the number by ordinance now without going through the tax amendment process, they would only be able to build up to six feet and so it doesn't really help anything. You know, so like, we could, we could theoretically help me understand. Uh, we could vote on increasing the number of licenses tomorrow, right now, 40 hours from now, right? If that's what we wanted to do, but then they would only be able to subject to the code that's in place until the zoning process works its way through and we can't.
It just means they have to hold on to bill.
Yeah.
Right. One doesn't. Nobody's asked for more licenses that night, haven't heard that yet.
No.
No, at, at a prior meeting.
Why would we, I mean, if there's.
They have to utilize that.
We agreed, we agreed as a board to go to 15. Um, and I don't necessarily want to back away from that because we, we agreed as a board that 15 was the right number for that. And so, but I think that with this, I think that we'll just do it all at once. So let's go through the zoning, go through the tax amendment process, get all this done and then increase it to 15.
So all the people that want tickets need to go to plan and zone. Hearing.
You're welcome, Mr. Rock. Okay, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you. With that, um, now we're gonna have, uh, Mark Montgomery, our, our utility supervisor, just gonna make a couple of presentations to discuss with you. You're having your packet, two, two memorandums from Mark.
About the EPA.
Yes, one address and some public comments that were made at the last board meeting. I can correct the record there. And another one having to do with a second topic will be about the, uh, regulation of truck wash. And how staff. You got Mark?
Tough job to follow the chickens.
I heard you say over here you wanted to get some chickens over this morning.
You know, they have goats at O'Hare Airport to help with the grass. Got a lot of grass over there. Maybe you can go out and maybe why not?
Well, hello again. I'm here to, uh, discuss the United States EPA website called Echo and the Village of Hampshire's wastewater treatment plant status. And then I've been asked to say a few words about the industrial pretreatment approval process. So Echo stands for Enforcement Compliance History Online. That's the name of their website. Um, the Illinois EPA, who governs everything I do, uh, takes my documents, uploads them to the US EPA and they made a site out of, um, compliance and other relevant things. Josh is gonna put up the Echo site, so any plant in the United States governed by the EPA can be found on this thing. Uh, if you put in the.
Six zero.
Correct.
Got it.
Yeah.
This will take you to everything once he scrolls down from this picture. Uh, anybody with an EPA permit, whether it be air or wastewater treatment or whatever, is gonna be listed on this, uh, within that area code. And then, I don't know how far on it goes, but we're in there. Hampshire wastewater treatment plant.
Right, the one with all the little squares, that's us.
With all the permits.
The other ones are tech businesses and other regulated businesses.
And this is us. Down at the end of Mill Avenue. They have a dashboard at the very top and you can see right away what is going on. And you can see at the, above that, our related reports that we can now discuss in a bit. But going over the enforcement and compliance summary, you can see that there is a violation identified with quarters of non-compliance, seven out of 12. We'll see in a little bit that those are all reporting errors and not discharge violations. You can see to the right of it, quarters with significant violations. Those show up in red when you get those. You don't want red. That's usually a, um, discharge permit violation, but not always. I don't know where the cutoff is, but there's discharge violations on other people's sites. Uh, that aren't in red, they're in the yellow. I don't know what the cutoff is, so it must be a real nasty violation. You can see further to the right, our enforcement actions, um, informal, formal penalties. They're all clear. We've not had any problems with EPA. Scroll down a bit, please. That's the information right there. You can look at the last five years of, um, inspections. And if you click the five years, it'll go to 10 years. They'll let you go back that far. And you can see to the right, there are no findings. Uh, all my inspections have been just spotless. Uh, you can see that 11, 12, 19 was listed twice. There's supposed to be another different inspection in there. This site is not flawless, that you'll see. So if you come down a little bit more, please. They do it in 12. They go back only 12 quarters or three years and they let you see everything in there. The biggest thing to take away from this is that all of these are reporting errors for two separate reports, uh, different times over the quarters. And nowhere in that will you see a discharge, uh, violation. If you scroll across to the right, you'll see it go to the end. And there they. Is the current quarter that they're still evaluating.
And I just want one, one thing out because this is gonna help me. If you look in the middle there at the bottom, there's two quarters next to each other, 331, 22 and 45, 22. 331 is the date that report was due and 45 is the date the US EPA received it from Illinois EPA. Mark probably submitted it a month before then. So they show us as two violations, it's the same report that was reported, just, just date, late dates, it's all of it.
This report can be thought of as a, uh, report card from school. We're getting all straight A's, but there's a couple of assignments missing.
They were just late there.
Yeah, we're not missing, we're up to date.
So, uh, the reason we wanted Mr. Montgomery tonight, I'm gonna kind of explain how this works is because there were some allegations made at our last board meeting that here we have several EPA violations as it is. And now we'd be considering any type of. Specific biosolids, that's the stuff I would say, that's what actual accusation, the really alleged violations was pointed at specific chemical discharge violations. What he read that night was a list of violations, a list of chemicals that could be discharged from this plant. They were not properly treated, completely out of context, but they are properly treated within their, within guidelines, within the, not guidelines, mandatory levels.
Yeah.
And by the way, we're, we're pretty much alone in this, in this being perfect world here. Here, we're gonna show a couple of our neighbors here, a lot of red. Look at St. Charles, 25, 30 quarters red. A lot of surrounding, a lot of surrounding tiles.
Yes.
So those chemicals were, could be distributed, not, they are not being distributed.
Those other communities say they're not, they're not, um, treating it to the level that they need to. So they're not. Some cases here, 16 times the level of a lot of.
Right. But here we are treating that and they are not being distributed.
Let Mark say that, yes.
Yeah, we'll get to that in a minute.
I just was trying to add some context to it because I could see.
Oh, I appreciate that.
They were kind of, the boards kind of like lacing over like, okay.
Don't, don't generalize the board, Mike, that's, that's incorrect statement. Maybe some people on the board, but not you got the board.
Go to the left, no, I'd like to stay there if I may. Keep going to this, to that. Yeah, that's okay. This is where I have, um, disappointment in the EPA. Who's my partner? I work with them, they regulate me, I have good relationships with them. But you see that there's two yellows there in the middle. I had an EPA inspection on April 13th and I've got the report here and it's beautiful. Now, they're telling me how good my record keeping is. They literally address the, um, uploading of documents and they said they've got everything they need. And they never pointed out that this was missing. There's like a disconnect between Illinois and the US EPA with this stuff. If you go to the left, Josh, please. You'll see there that there's a violation there that has nothing underneath it. I come to find out that I went a quarter without, the village went a quarter without an operating permit. The EPA was, um, behind in processing new permits. So they said, just keep working off the old one. I'm told I'm getting dinged for that there. The previous two you can see that are from 2020 are for biosolids monitoring port. You see that in a lot of people's, um, Echo sites. It's, it, for some reason, there's a metal plaque on that report. There's a lot of reporting with biosolids and we send reports everywhere and they probably sit down the hall from each other and pass them back and forth down in Springfield. And, um, the US EPA is saying they don't have those documents. If you scroll up a little bit, please, to where the inspections are. You see the bottom one, Biosolids Desk Audit EPA. That is United States Environmental Protection Agency. I had a full-on audit from them on my biosolids program. You can see to the right there, the findings are none. All my paperwork was in order, sludge is in good order. We're not discharging anything or sending it out to the fields with any excursions whatsoever. If you go down, please, a little bit. A little bit more, please. I don't know if you're. Lagging.
Anybody have a order? I think we need to buy a new computer. That's a brand new computer. Seven days old.
Two days.
Send it back.
There's two different permits in there. Uh, you saw where the, where the, the blue and the, uh, yellow were. Below that is a whole row of glue. That's my sludge permit.
Access. You gotta be quiet for a minute. I mean, totally quiet.
Okay. You sure the screen? Home room sprout, kids. Hey, Bill, your microphone's on. Should be able to mute it.
Of course, there's technical problems when we got a presentation.
I'm just meaning, Bill.
Yeah, but it's not your fault.
Another reporting error, yes.
Technology's great, Bill's not.
Below all the ones that were for, um, wastewater discharge.
There you go.
Those are for biosolids. I find it ironic that I'm perfect and that happens to be EPA. I have to do a report, reports to them. Something got filed up down there and they, uh, resolved it. I have no idea what it is. So, but I find it ironic that I'm perfect with, you know, the biosolids where it counts. But there's a one-page report missing or it's not missing, it was reportedly late. So I've got those violations up top there. So, um, the takeaway on that is there's no discharge violations. If we scroll up to the top, please.
For the record, he's there.
So those are related reports. We can go to the top one, that's the Clean Water at Polluted Loading Report. I was gonna say, that's not the right, there you go. Keep coming down, please. You're not trying.
He is.
This is where it counts for me. Not that it, it all counts, but this is where, you know, it, it really matters. We're not discharging anything into the receiving stream. We are well within everything. If you go down a little bit, you'll see that there's flags that can be. You can download those reports and look at exactly what we're discharging and how below the limits we are. We have a massively oversized plant. We are very underloaded, so it's, it's.
You know, it's interesting on this too, Mr. Murray. We had a conversation, had to do a vote on multiple hundred thousand dollar study that's being mandated. And two, if I remember correctly, check phosphorus discharge out of our wastewater treatment facility. But when I look at this report up here, we're allowed up to 12,248 pounds and yet we know we're only discharging 254 pounds.
It's so disappointing and it's so frustrating because, you know, they want us to do all this research for them and show back what we're doing to the watershed. We're basically doing the work for them.
Is it, is it the, uh, I E P A is forcing us to do their work?
They don't want the farmers to do the work.
They, they.
And this is being pushed by US EPA.
Whatever, but we're, we're, we're having to foot the bill.
Yes.
To do their job.
Yeah.
Cause I look at this and this, like, I'm, I don't, I don't know one iota of the water treatment business like you do. But I look at that and I think.
Yeah.
That's.
What's more is when I got my new permit in, um, 2021, in fact, they're dating April 1st, 2021. The memo that the EPA was working on when they studied our situation to make a permit said that we were no longer a phosphorus, uh, uh, concern with that creek. So, yeah, right. But they still put that in there and everyone's getting them. They're not picking on us, everyone's getting the nard.
Right.
So it is what it is.
I just think, cause that's an accountable that has come up in other conversations with the community members and there are other type of biosolids that have come up. And yet, in all of these that I look at, your team and, and the facility that your team manages at most looks like at 10% of the allowable limit in most cases. In some, less than 1%.
If I had a beaker water here, you'd think it was, uh, drinkable. It's just, it's very clear going out. We have almost no, it's like three or four parts per million solids. The BOD, the biochemical oxygen demand is almost zero. The phosphorus, we've got that down to point one. Um, they've got it in my permit, they're kind of scolding me. By 2030, you're gonna be at point five, mister. I'm at point one right now. You know, and the plant's just operating beautifully. So, and there's a lot bigger list than that right there. Uh, if you hit the downloads, but all of it, you go along and it's just, it's. So I'm, uh, zero for 12 on these quarters. Josh, if you go up a little bit.
Maybe he is, he's there.
This, by the way, this is our wireless network, causing this slow down. Can we get a different one? I'm working, there it is. Cover, I'm working. Feeding rabbits.
So select 2019. If you would, please.
What's that?
Can you select 2019?
Absolutely.
I won't go to every year. I just hit my 12-year anniversary, so, um, I will show you 2019 as one, my one blemish. And we can come down. And you see it's flagged for burial. That was in August of 2019. That's one month out of 144 months. I will own it. If there's a reason for that, we just got that put in our permit and we spent a hundred thousand dollars on a new, um, alum delivery system. And we, yep, and we put it into play and there was a little bit of a learning curve. So we, we got a 2.7 instead of a two, we made our adjustments. The next month we were in compliance and we have been ever since. So, um, you can see that for the year we were under, but if you have one month that's bad, you get flat. And so that'll be in the record and I own one month out of 144 here in my state.
So, right, Mark? Okay. Thanks, Joe. Yeah. Yeah. Why don't we just, uh, why don't we take a look at, uh, our neighbor to the east? Say, thank you. I'm thinking of anybody, just, they're giving a building a $64 million shoot true mill, so we're gonna see a lot. And we're not gonna look at dates, now we're gonna go right down to the biosolids. They just get a wrist slap or, or do they, after a period of time, that findings begin?
Yes and no. They know they have a problem and they're spending $65 million on a new wastewater treatment plant. So the EPA is gonna work with them on this. And they're about to break ground soon, as I understand. So they're, they're aware that they have problems.
Well, their plant's old, isn't it? Twenty, ten years old or something?
Well, undersized. Evidently it's undersized.
Well, it was built prior to Cambridge. And, and we don't need it, we're not picking on our neighbors, but if you look at St. Charles, it's, it's even worse. Larger community like that, but all the funding that you assume that they have. Huntley is, is pretty good chip, right?
Yeah.
We'd, we'd one or two violations.
You can see where you have arrows coming across if you have a, uh, something missing. What's really frustrating to the operators, and I went to the Fox Valley Operators Association Conference today and this was a hot topic, caused quite a stir. I asked all my contemporaries, are you aware of this site? And none of them were. And I showed them, I'm like, well, look it up. And the faces were priceless. It was like mine sitting over there a couple of weeks ago. I didn't know the site existed, but, uh, we're looking at it as a blessing. A blind spot was pointed out and we're gonna take care of it.
I appreciate all your efforts and your team's efforts and our residents do and really.
This number two guy over here, Sean, is pretty awesome too.
He's been adding some clarity to all the stated.
Four years, right?
Tony Macara and Austin and Christian, you know, we've got a real good team down there. Everyone gets along and really proud of the guys, they all chip in, they get along. You know, it's, they, they really, they care.
It's happening.
They do their jobs.
And then they plow.
And then they plow.
All right, why don't we, any questions? That will move on to the, um, regulation of truck washes, just briefly.
I'd like to say thank you, Mark. Oh, for this is, I mean, to follow back on, to give us all this information and to, you know, it, that's, it's very much.
Assistant Secretary was one that asked her, specifically asked her response to that. So you all received an email, which, Mark, you're sorry.
I was on it immediately, uh, we get on problems right off. Uh, we take our job seriously. The public health is at risk. You know, we, we deal with the drinking water and that starts with what we dump in the stream. You know, you have the water cycle, so it's, it's all about providing drinking water to the people. So we jump on these things.
Water has to be monitored. Do you share this with me when I started this trustee? When somebody comes and tests our water every?
Yes.
Even over like Christmas, New Year's, 365 days a year, they have to test the water. So someone to test the water every Christmas.
Boots on ground, or somebody in here, boots on ground, Christmas morning, testing the water, making sure everything's running properly.
From, from what page is it?
Our guys.
Oh, oh, oh.
Our guys, we do that. We've got, we've got laboratories inside of the, um, wellhouses.
Is that a requirement of you or is that something you have chosen?
Yeah, no, it's a requirement. And I've heard rumors that some towns tried to cut money and save money and have a camera on there and they have things automated. And EPA said, no, I want human eyes looking at this, so we can't get away from it.
They take, uh, they take the water very seriously and chose it and I appreciate it.
That's rough chat.
Yeah, it's great water. So speaking of groundwater. Would you like to, uh, should we discuss industrial pretreatment approval process?
Well, that would be great.
So anybody that comes in, first off, you have a code in, in, uh, on the books that addresses all this. It's pretty solid. Uh, just following that code, anybody who comes into town has to fill out a survey. It's a simple form. The biggest thing we look for, are you a categorical industrial user? Categorical industrial user, there's a definition for that, uh, from the federal government of what type of industry you are. If you're a categorical industrial user, you're automatically getting permitted. I don't have a choice on that, that's the law. Um, the second thing that we look for, are you a significant industrial user? And there's a, um, definition for that. If you use 25,000 gallons or more, if you contribute, uh, 5% to the organic loading, I'm going off of memory here. There was one other thing I can't remember. So, um, if you're a significant industrial user, you're getting permitted. So now, if you're gonna get permitted, then you go to the, um, the permit application, which is more detailed. You're gonna tell us what you're gonna be dumping on us. Um, I've got one out right now to Love's Truck Wash and, uh, I'm waiting to hear back from them and they're gonna tell us what's in there and we'll review it and see if they need a permit or not.
Do they have to pay a permit fee? If they need a permit?
I don't know the answer. I don't know the answer to that.
Sit through it.
This is my first permit, actually.
This is local permitting here.
Okay.
In fact, I want to apologize for the fact that I think when this topic came up at the last meeting, the staff did not realize that we had that, maybe didn't understand the question, but we already have a survey, a permit application, permit, so the process is already there, it's just applying to truck washes.
We need to dust it off a little bit.
The question that come up, too, because the expert that, that was presenting to us had stated that, uh, in most cases, the independent truck washes would not be the twenty-five thousand gallon per day discharge rate. And so, however, the village or the local municipality, or what they call it, P O T W...
Yeah, P O T W.
Um, would be responsible for the, um, regulation and enforcement of that facility, whether it has a permit or not, that the EPA, the I E P A, none of them would be involved, um, in that case. And so, I think some of the question, too, was, how would we regulate this? How would we ensure that things happen if they're not meeting twenty-five thousand gallons per day?
All right, we don't expect anybody, really. And we can pop a manhole and do testing, that sort of thing. If they're permitted, uh, there's all kinds of things we can do. At any time, if we think somebody has changed the nature of their waste, we can permit them. We can have them, uh, fill out an application, say, you know, we, we would like you to fill out an application, we'd like to know more about what you're discharging, and we'd like to inspect your facility, what you're spill containing, for example, that sort of thing.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the gentleman that spoke said that... Did you, did you have your last meeting?
Jesse Freeman?
Mr. Baker?
No, the gentleman, the gentleman that...
From Little Rock, Arkansas, I think.
Yeah, the, the expert that spoke on truck washes. Yeah. He, he's been doing it for twenty years or thirty years.
Oh, like fifty.
Fifty years, sorry. He had made a comment like, and, and I think it was because if you didn't meet the minimum, then you wouldn't have to be a permit. He had made a comment that this would be the only municipality he'd heard of that wouldn't be a part of a permit. And then his recommendation is that any truck wash would have a permit and regular either reporting inspection. And so, I think that was part of the discussion, is how would we do that if the current one doesn't require the permit because they'd be under the discharge?
Do you want to regulate somebody that's under minimum requirements?
I want to follow what the expert said, every single other municipality does. Just my personal preference. If it was like, we want to go above and beyond what others are doing, that's a different conversation, but saying we're the only one that he's heard of that wouldn't have that in place, I think that's a little different.
You said that you do have...
For me, I'm not gonna speak for the board, just a few things.
Mark did just say that you do have, you did send a permit to Love's?
Permit application.
Permit application, yes.
It's a determinative thing. Well, the survey determines, really, normally, let me speak for my side, sorry.
Go ahead.
Normally, Mark would have gotten the survey back and said, they're under the minimum, they don't, wouldn't get a permit application. And now, we're requiring them to fill out a permit, permit application, give more details. So, another question would be, if they, if they don't need any, any requirements, one of us is on, on a permit, right?
Yes.
We could do that, you could do that. Just tell us that now, if that's the majority of the board, that's what we'll do.
I just wanted to follow up on all of that, and I think, um, Mr. Montgomery, you had mentioned, you know, two out of the three qualifications for becoming a significant industrial user. The third one that's listed here says is designated as touched by the village on the basis that it has a reasonable potential for adversely affecting the public, the owner's treatment works, operation. So, I would think that's why we would be able to say to just about, you know, like, hey?
That's what I did with Love's. I see that there is a community concern, I've been hearing phosphorus, so I says, you know what, there's this concern, I'm gonna make you do a application, tell us what you're doing. And I had a phone conversation, uh, with, I believe, they had an engineer call me, and I had questions about it, and I says, you know, just do your best to address the phosphorus situation. As part of that, it says, you know, what's in your waste area? And she's like, well, we haven't even built it yet, how do I get a waste area? Fair question, but okay, do you have other facilities around the country that you could give me some information to go off of? And maybe they'll come back and say, you know, none of our detergents have phosphorus , period. And, great. So, I'm gonna make them tell me what's in it.
But now, let's say, just, let's play devil's advocate here. They say that they don't have anything with phosphorus, and then, you know, two, three years from now, you notice higher levels, someone comes out, what's your process? No, I understand that, but what's your process in being able to find that? To see, to say something, hey, something's off here, how do you go about, like, identifying that it's them?
Manhole. Manhole.
I'm sorry, I, I...
You, you, you trace it back, and you do sampling, and, uh, the, the phosphorus sampling in particular is not too hard to trace, we can do that in-house. So, we would trace that back to, uh, we'd trace it right back to their front door.
I think many of you are familiar with when we traced back, EMI, if you... Right?
I don't, I don't know, I think that was before most of them.
Yeah, it was quite a few years ago. We had...
Got slammed into the Truden plant, and it was pretty easy if I had words coming.
And then, do we have a, a fine structure in place or something in that nature to keep all this in bay, or how do, how do, like, what's, uh, what's our enforcement mechanism?
There's an enforcement mechanism in the code. I can't quote it to you right now, but, uh, it's in there. I've had to use it once. I find, I find a company in town here that was dumping on us.
So, to trustee voters' question, uh, that third bullet means that we really don't have to rewrite anything, that if the village deems that these type of facilities should all require a permit application, that covers anything that you could require?
I agree with that.
And then, once the permit application is submitted and they receive a permit, is there then a regular inspection or reporting requirement that goes with that permit?
They have to report a, um, every six months, they have to send in a semester report to me. Um, it depends what we put in there, we can write it pretty much how we want. I have some users that, every month, they send me their, uh, waste hauling, uh, manifests. I wanna see them. Um, other ones, it's not that big of an issue, we don't bother them with it. But everyone has to send me what they're doing every tw- every, uh, six months.
So, they do have that, right?
Right.
Okay.
And then, there's also different ways, we notice, we know when their water usage is going way up, uh, that sort of thing. We got, we know, we know who's out there.
So, what, so the, the staff requested action, and requested action from staff, this does, this poor field, our truck washes, car washes, that kind of thing, that discharge into our, our wastewater system, should they all go through the permitting process? Or do we leave it up to discretion?
Do they have to re, renew the permit every year?
Every three or four years, I can't remember.
Keeps them honest. They don't have to pay. Right, there's not a fees, there's no fee or nothing.
No.
It keeps them honest, so why not? And then, it at least requires the report.
Okay, I think that...
Is that a consensus?
Yeah.
I believe it is.
Really, I'm really looking for it.
So, then that addresses to...
That addresses zoning ordinance, the little bit of effect, and so...
The board's comfortable with that?
Yeah.
So, we don't have to talk about this?
Nope. We want to talk about it.
I like what you're doing.
I think we're interested.
Thank you, thank you both for coming.
Thank you, Jim.
Can I just get a quick follow-up question?
Yeah, absolutely. You're not out of the book yet.
Sorry, can you explain why there isn't a permit fee? Like, why not?
That's a fair que- that's a fair question. We can kind of dug this out, because it, it doesn't get used a lot, we only have four companies that we're monitoring right now before the truck washes, so we'll look at that.
I mean, not that I'm eager to charge people more, but I'm just curious why...
Something.
Well, I mean, everybody else pays a permit fee, so why not?
If it takes staff, you know, two hours to reverse, to fill out the permit, then we ought to, you know, charge them, like, right?
I'm just curious.
I'll just tell you that we had to change the logo on the form when I got the form out, so if that's how it was...
How many logos, old ones?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I am finished, I believe. Oh, reports, engineering report. Any questions for Mr. Paulson? If not, then we are over, and we'll refer to cables.
Fantastic.
I have one final question. Um, are the walklights functional yet?
I'm sorry, where?
The, the crossing, the walklight?
Yeah.
They are, I...
I'm sorry, like, they're on.
Well, that started.
Yeah.
I have not gone anywhere other than...
The day before. Plenty, plenty of time, we have plenty of time.
So, Big, so Big Timber, the lights are all functional, everything's good, State Street, the lights came, just the lights are on, you know, take the long way home, you can see it all lit up with the beautiful light poles, and Mr. Hedges didn't know when they were coming, and then they showed up the next day.
And I didn't tell you that they were, I didn't tell you they were gonna be turned on the fourteenth, because I wasn't sure, but they were.
And then, just a question for you now, Mr. Paulson, the, the cables that still run, that used to have the old lights on, do those stay because they're the power cables, like...
I presume that they'll come down, but I, I had it on.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yes.
They go right, temporary light, but at some point, they looked a little low, and I'm like, oh.
Do they come down, Tim?
Yeah, they should be coming down, yes. They were temporary.
They're on, that's all that matters. Now, we'll start getting complaints about when arrows lasting too long, and they are out, as we did during construction.
Oh, you already got complaint?
No, I said, now we'll start getting them.
Oh. I drove through the light up at Big Timber, and, uh, and my wife, my wife, my wife... No, 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 they were green. My wife was in the car, she took pictures going, like, with the One Direction ticket, and then she took it coming back, and then I sent it to my friends up in Lakewood, and I said, it, it's, it's just nice that I never did stop. And then, the next, like, ten minutes later, she sent a picture, and she's like, I'm already stopped at the stoplight, I said, don't you complain about me. Not after all this. So, anyhow, um, so next, we have the accounts payable to personnel in the amount of sixty-four dollars and nineteen cents.
Bad guy.
So, both.
Ooh, check it.
Questions, comments, concerns? Uh, Mr. Deputy, oh, can you call your own private phone? Are you sure, is that a contact?
Oh.
All right, go ahead. Uh, Mr. Austin? Ms. Futter? And Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Ma?
Hi.
Ms. Paul Street?
Hi.
Looking past six zero. Next, the big one, uh, four hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred eighty-three dollars and thirty-one cents.
Page nine?
Page nine.
I just want to know what O D H C invoice is. What's O D?
She speaks.
Anything else?
Um, page one.
Page one, I have the bank.
Yeah, sorry.
That's right.
Okay. Uh, the bike hitch? Um, that bike?
What?
Amazon Capital Services, two-bike hitch mount wreck.
Light.
I'm guessing police department, I'm guessing.
Yeah, you guys finally gonna use those bikes that are hanging on the walls forever?
Yeah, actually, so, yeah. They reuse at Coon Creek, yeah.
We, we couldn't just ride them from the station?
We had to buy a truck.
I told you, I told you, it's a long way from a city.
So, you get a call, Lakewood would have to ride your bike to Lakewood.
Peter, a half hour, it's only...
They'll be waiting at the lake, yeah.
Jay Ves is like, drum.
Yeah, but I'm not in a hurry usually, well, I'm not trying to save somebody's life.
Any other questions?
Page eleven, um, the commercial investments, the lease and build out, is that the, the police department?
Yes.
Um, and then, page twelve, the lead service line replacement plan. What's that? I mean, and does, I mean, is that something that we entered into with those owners that have lead?
I don't know what the number is.
So, she's looking at some environmental lead service line?
So, it's a total of, I mean, it's not a huge amount, but thirty-four fifty-two, but when I saw the lead service line replacement plan, I thought, is that something that we're entering into with the residents that had lead, um, service on their pipes?
I think those, isn't that the firm that's helping us put all the information together, or is that Tim?
Someone is the laboratory.
Yes, that was lead testing that I had performed.
Okay.
And in our budget, it was, uh, put in, I believe, contingency, but it was listed as lead service line planning.
So, it wasn't source?
It wasn't precedent?
No.
Okay, 'cause I know we are working on that as...
That's gonna be coming soon.
Okay. And then, does that go along with, um, the one right above that, so labs, the third and laboratories?
Yes.
The replacement plan, monthly analysis, is...
Any other questions?
Just one statement, because I hope people watch this after. So, anybody that looks at these numbers in our packet, one thing to keep in mind when you're looking at the four hundred eighty-three thousand dollar number, is about a hundred fifty-five to a hundred and sixty thousand of that is transitioned, which wasn't our money to begin with, we're just giving it to the other...
To the school.
Well, the vast majority is the school, but to the school, the Park District, the library, to anybody that were custodian of that money from the developers. So, it may look like we spend a lot all the time, but look at, like, what the line items are, transition, transition fees. We don't show income, so building inspections that are on here, we actually perceive income, offset the cost, so...
We had thirty-two new home permits last month, so that's...
Yeah, we were having sixteen a year.
Yeah. Any other questions? Comments, concerns? Uh, I'm taking motion to do, uh, pay the accounts payable in the four hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred eighty-one, eighty-three dollars and thirty-one cents.
Follow.
Question, comments, concerns? Street Deputy Clark. Ms. Futter?
Hi.
Mr. Kelly?
Hi.
Mr. Coe?
Hi.
Mr. Ma?
Hi.
Ms. Paul Street?
Hi.
Mr. Armstrong?
Looking past six zero.
Okay, trustee Kelly?
Uh, so, B D C met last week, uh, thank you for your time and consideration of the three applications that came to report. The, there is a fourth application that came to the B D C that was sent back to the applicant to ask them to reevaluate, I think, the application. And, uh, I would estimate they're probably gonna recite it with some, hopefully some changes to be, so we'll see. The B D C has some recommendations on what those changes should be. So, when that comes back, I will, uh, share that. The other discussion that came up was a sign ordinance, and I know trustee Paul Street, you had mentioned about the size of the sign. So, right now, the village, and I'm trying to do this off memory, so, just correct me if I'm wrong, the sign ordinance states that, uh, the square footage of the sign may be no more than three feet by the length of the building.
The width.
Or width of the building. So, if a building is a hundred feet wide, they can have a three hundred square foot sign for our current ordinance. And there is no real restrictions on the type of sign that it can be other than, it can only come off the building, because we passed an update so far, so like the copper barrel, the hand, our village hall, Christine and Michelle, like, some of those can only come off so far from the building. But literally, you could have a business that puts up a three hundred square foot backlit sign right down on State Street. Yes.
I was going to say, do we think that that was written before we had the projecting sign, and it was meant to cover the, the things that, or have?
I think it was written when lakes were cool.
Because there was a time period where downtown, being there with business, that was, that's what you did.
Look at that, I'm talking to you sometimes, it's just nothing but flashy neon 24.
Okay, but we're not talking temperature, we're talking like, that kind of cool. When you said cool.
No, what I, I meant, they were just.
Not temperature. The coolness style. Yeah, so, from what I'm understanding, this one, this has been in for a long time. And so the beautification committee brought it up, that that's a concern, especially with all the work that the facade program is doing to, to beautify downtown and various areas. And so there is an ask that will come before the village board to, for a reconsideration of that sign ordinance, what, what could make sense, how could we encourage. Restrictions on some of those things, so you don't end up with a 300 square foot sign that's backlit and on every single building. 300 square foot is not the number, it is three feet by the width of the building, using that as an example, as an example. So there is a cap. 120 square foot is the cap if the building is set back less than 200 feet.
Yes.
Throw that out there. So there is a cap. So, good news is 120 square feet, which is a little, I would guess probably two-thirds of this room.
Turn on the dead chicken.
So, that was discussed in depth, and then part of that was also, so that was one thing. That little con, we, we talked to, or Mr. Hedges was there, and I think it was their recommendation to have that reevaluated.
Actually, I think they're going to do the research.
They are, they're going to come with a recommendation. Beautification is going to get it to B D C so we can get it to the village board for consideration of, of a change to that ordinance, and we're, the hope is that that's done rather quickly so that it avoids any other buildings getting out of your signs.
Trustee Kelly, on that line, we had changed or made some changes to the signs up at, like Loves and all those, and that was limited, so is that a separate part of the ordinance? Or, so that's just?
That's called the overlay district, that has a separate sign ordinance.
Okay, okay. Because I know we had done something with signs before, but.
We did, we limited how many.
Yeah, and we increased how many, based on, you know.
We did that to limit it all variations.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you for.
So that, that was one discussion we had. The other discussion we had, as this board had asked beautification to do, was a reevaluation of the facade grant program and the details of that program. Things that were discussed were, should there be deadlines for applications? That was discussed by beautification and their recommendation, and the B D C agreed with the recommendation, is that there shouldn't be a deadline, that if, by having a deadline, there are other rules in there, like the work must be done within six months of the project or of the acceptance of the, of the facade grant. So like tonight, all of the ones that were accepted, there are six months from today, or I think it's today, that those projects have to be done for that program. Well, what if somebody applies right before the start of the year? And then they can't get the construction for systems, there's delays. So it was just felt that, rather than saying this is the deadline date, allow for rolling deadlines. But to take into consideration things like a project going from one budget year to the next budget year. So that was the deadline, no recommended change there. There was no recommended change to the, to the, the other thing discussed was the physical area included within the facade grant program. Should we widen that area to include other parts of the village? The, this, the recommendation is not to change that and to take those applications as an exception, one-off application for consideration, but not to say that it's considered a part of the village. That's not the intended purpose. There was also discussion, the program had its name changed because many of the applications are more than just the facade in the front of the building. And it was felt that that's really irrelevant, that the facade program in its intent is meant so that the front part of the building looks nice, but that there are rules that things that accommodate other needs of those businesses. So no change recommended there. The one change that was recommended is, in that program, in the facade grant program, it specifically excludes signs as part of that acceptable project. As you saw tonight, there were signs included in this because it was felt by the B D C, and, and we had discussed that the B D C has the authority to make the changes to the facade grant program. It's not an ordinance, it's not a rule that the village board has to change. It was decided to allow signs as a part of it, so that we could be able to make recommendations, so that we could be able to ensure that when they're doing, like the projects you saw tonight, they're spending a lot of time and effort there, that the beautification committee could make recommendations of what kind of sign or the size of it.
Can I just say one comment? You're approving, you're approving each, each year grant, and therefore you're approving any changes that happen or are set.
Yeah.
Ultimately, this board does.
Makes the final approval of the application itself, but the guidelines for the program.
Facility for the program is really valuable.
And so, it's felt that the B D C and the beautification committee, and with the recommendations to the B D C, met the asks of this board of reevaluating programs, so there's no significant changes being recommended this time. Any questions on any of that? And it was just good discussions on the board projects. Long, very long meetings.
Was there any discussion about limiting the amount? You know, we've got 50%, 75% is like a max, because I mean, one person could kind of come in and heat up 90,000.
There wasn't really a discussion on saying that there's a maximum. There was a lot of discussion of ensuring, how do we try to make the broadest impact within the budget that we have? And it was communicated that the village board did not want to get into a situation of going over budget again, with the exception that the board was already notified at the beginning of this budget year, that a facade program that was approved last year because of construction material delays will come out of this year's budget, even though it was out of last year's budget. But that was her love, so I think those are the guidelines that went that, those funds are out. And that's why projects like you saw tonight for $2,200, while we probably would normally go right back to somebody for the same building for another design, are going to feel that that's not reducing you a lot. It's not that a significant.
Thank you. Public Works?
We'll have a full report next month.
Do business, other numbers?
Just a thank you to the planning and zoning firm, chulering the, their meeting with the light properties and whoever else was there.
Yeah, I heard there was a lot of passion, was it?
You know, I, I think it deserves some recognition, none of you, none of you chose to be, that really couldn't be there, but Mr. Rosetti and Brian were amazing, the whole board was, it was very deliberate, too. They were, they, they spoke their minds, they spoke their opinions, they spoke to the audience a little bit, let them know that they didn't appreciate some of their cat calls and comments, but in a, in a very proper way. I was very proud of our commission, I think.
I, I like the professionalism that you guys bring to the process, and I think that we are a much better village because of it, and I appreciate your efforts.
Well, there was no chair throwing, so.
All I just want to say, thank, thank you to all of you, thank you to all of the staff. Coon Creek, as Carl Palmasano said, was a success, and it was no small coincidence that it wasn't because of you guys. I mean, realistically, you guys put your heart and soul into everything that we do, and you know how much Coon Creek means to the village, and a lot, you know, from elected officials that were involved, to our staff and public works, and it was an undertaking. They did a great job, and I appreciate it.
Everybody, good stuff.
We might need a line item for the lead, though. Just saying.
And then.
You're very, you wouldn't take it.
Car, car show this weekend, come out on Sunday, and it should be a good time.
I do have one thing, it was mentioned earlier in topics of public works, I do want to commend staff, Mr. Hedges, King County, at the swiftness to which that stoplight and that safe crossing zone for us, for the Lakewood to the Big Timber Elementary School was put in. We sat here as a board, and when they presented that project, and I remember distinctly many of us being upset that a traffic study was done in December of COVID to justify whether a light was coming in or not. And the ability to find a resolution to making sure that those kids and, and those families are safe to get to school, and I know how much both you and the county and everybody worked to get it done before the school started, just how much that probably means to those residents, so thank you very much for that.
And by the way, Crown and the school district also contributed, this four-way thing, but KDOT at the end were late came through.
Which is ironic, because it was KDOT that sent the information that they estimated we would need a stoplight there for 20 years. I remember that meeting, 20 years, and a year later, they put the stop.
You guys might not believe this, but trustee Paulson was a little retinized face while he was talking to county.
The warrants, they use pedestrian warrants instead of car warrants, that's, that's changing. But thank you very much, and I'm sure the residents appreciate it.
While we're passing out, thank you, I just wanted to thank staff and all of our volunteers on all of our committees who have done things, but, you know, being new on the board in the last couple of years and watching, like, the absolute professionalism, the depth of information, you know, the care that goes into it. We have a question, it's answered. There's never a problem with that, it's never, I don't know, you know? It, it's, we'll get back to you, and they, and you get back to us in such a quick timeframe, that it allows us to make the educated decisions that we need to make to represent the best interests of our community into the future. So I really do appreciate all that all of you do, and it has just been on display all night, so, stunned.
Let me have a ball.
Yes.
On behalf of Coon Creek, I'd like to thank the village for the signs that they helped